The media's called to order. We'll start with a roll call. Mary Ann, could you?
Actually, I'm gonna, this is Kate.
Okay, Kate, thank you.
I will do the roll call. I will call the community and then the names, but just the first round and then I'll call just the names for the next round. Adams.
Mike Mack.
Yeah. Alford. Beckett. Cheshire. Clarksburg. Dalton.
Caleb Darby, present.
I'm sorry, Caleb. Edgerton.
Mary McGurn.
Florida. Great Barrington.
Malcolm Thicke, alternate.
Hancock. Hinsdale.
Richard Ruson.
Lanesboro.
Barb Davis Hassan, delegate, present.
Lee. Lennox.
Mark Smith, alternate. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Monterey. Mount Washington. New Ashford. New Marlborough. North Adams. Otis.
Mark Anthony.
Peru. Pittsfield. We knew that Sheila's not available. Sorry. Richmond. Candice Field. The boy. Steph Field.
Sorry, boy, delegate.
Stockbridge.
Nancy Socia for planning board.
Christine Rasmussen for board of selectmen, alternate.
Dearingham.
Amanda Hamilton, delegate, planning board.
Sarah Hudson, alternate.
Washington.
Don Garrett, delegate, planning board. Ben Lou, alternate, select board.
Wes Stockbridge. Williamstown.
Roger Bolton, alternate.
Windsor.
McNally, delegate.
Anybody arrived since I started the roll call? I've got everybody.
As we go forward, since I'm on Zoom, Tom or Kate, if you could let me know if anybody has a hand raised in the, in the room. I'd appreciate that. The next order of business is the approval of the minutes of the July 14th, 2022 meeting. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the minutes.
Thank you.
Second.
Can I make, can I make a correction to the minutes?
Yes, please.
Under, under paragraph C, approval of the minutes of May 19th, where I abstained, I'm the, the Lanesboro delegate and not the alternate.
Thanks, Barb.
You betcha.
Hey, any other corrections to the minutes? Okay, hearing none. Take a roll call. Kate, please.
All right, Michael Mack.
I abstain.
Caleb Darby.
I abstain.
Mary McGurn. Malcolm Thicke.
I abstain.
Richard Ruson.
I abstain.
Barb Davis Hassan.
Abstain.
Mark Smith.
Staying.
Mark Anthony.
Abstain.
Sorry, boy.
I.
Nancy Socia.
Abstain.
Amanda Hamilton.
I.
Don Gagnon.
Abstain.
Roger Bolton.
I'm.
And Doug McNally.
Okay. Is that, is that everybody?
How was it?
The next order of business is comments from the public. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment? Please raise your hand on Zoom or raise your hand in the room. Let's see. I don't see any hands raised.
Yeah, actually, Malcolm, there's no public in, in the room here. It's staff and delegates and alternates.
I think that may be, oh, no, okay. Okay, no comments from the public, then we'll entertain any delegate and alternate issues, which is the next item on the agenda.
Could I give an update from the last meeting on the subject of special municipal employee status? I did get very good feedback from a select board member in Adams who is going to send me a copy of a general bylaw where the SME, the special municipal employee status, is one that's more of a direction from a town's bylaw than a a random, you know, act of decision or not. So I thank you all for your participation and your help in leading me to that. And I just wanted to give you an update.
Great, thanks, Bob.
Thanks. Are there any other delegates or alternates who'd like to raise any issues? Okay, then the next order of business are the executive committee actions. This is outlined in the, in the information. Tom, would you like to go over this at all or?
I'm certainly willing to answer any questions if there are any that have arisen. These are, there's four sets of, I think there's four sets that we had. We haven't had a commission meeting for a while. I think we, our last meeting was in July. And as you know, we didn't have an annual meeting. They got canceled and we were going to have a commission meeting then. So there are a number of these, I think. Many of these are grant applications. And some policy changes. As I said, I'm willing to kind of go through what their specific questions.
Hey, does anybody have any questions about the executive committee actions?
This is Doug. Now, I'm, I'm trying to figure out, I tried to read through the billion pages of stuff. The discussion of, I think it doesn't come here. I think it comes when you look at the, the, the plan about student internships and stuff like that. That's under the plan. That's not under an executive committee.
Yeah, this is only the stuff, the things that are on pages nine through 12 of the, of the agenda package.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. If there are no other questions or comments about executive committee actions, then we can go on to one of our main orders of business, which is the SEDS report that needs to be submitted. Tom, you want to take lead with Laura on this?
Well, all, all I do is introduce Laura Brennan, who's our economic development program manager. And the SEDS, Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, is a long-term planning effort through the Economic Development Administration, the federal Economic Development Administration. And we are at a point where we have to prepare another plan. This plan needs to be submitted by the end of the year. So Laura is going to run through, you know, the key elements of the, the plan. And then they'll be, we'll need to take a vote to have the commission submit it or with changes or however we want to do that. So take it away, Laura.
Okay. Thank you. I'm glad to participate tonight to share with you an overview of the next regional SEDS for Berkshire County. As Tom mentioned, this is a five-year plan and we have been working on it for about a year. And I would like to share with you some noteworthy items from it. I should explain that SEDS are rather prescriptive in nature. There is a set number of components that have to be included and those are, are described to us by the Economic Development Administration. There are also some components that, as you'll hear, are optional and that we have chosen to include. So I'm going to share my screen and I'll ask for some thumbs up if in fact you're seeing an opening slide for a PowerPoint. Wonderful. Okay. And just starting here, as I mentioned, there are components that are required in a SEDS and one of those is a set of background information about our demographics and our economic conditions. So I want to just share with you a couple of noteworthy items from that section, which is, burns about 15 pages. I just have a couple of slides to share with you from that section tonight. The first is a representation of the old age dependency ratio in our region. This probably won't come as a surprise, but in the Berkshires, the ratio of 65 and older age cohort to the working or 15 to 64-year-old cohort is more pronounced than in many other areas of the state and nation. Here in this chart, we're comparing Berkshire County against Massachusetts as a whole. I know that many of these numbers, probably text, are going to be hard to see. So I'll just mention that our current 2020, which is the most recent available data, is a ratio of 0.39 as compared to Massachusetts, which is at 0.6 or 2/6, excuse me. For reference, Massachusetts' ratio is about the same as the United States. This is significant because it helps to articulate how the larger, older population is dependent upon the working-aged population in our region. Another noteworthy item is the unemployment rate. Berkshire County's annual unemployment rate as of 2021 had dropped to 6.7, a fairly dramatic reduction from the 9.1 in 2020, but still not reaching pre-pandemic levels. However, early quarterly data does indicate that the tight labor conditions are dragging the 2020 annual rate closer to pre-pandemic unemployment. And lastly, our median household income in Berkshire County increased by 5% from 2019 to 2020. Our median household income continues to lag behind the national and statewide figures. However, we do note that it does continue, continue to trend upwards. And our rate of growth is slightly faster than the capital district in New York State. And it's also significantly faster than the Pioneer Valley and the US rate overall. So moving on into the next section of the SEDS, we conducted a SWOT analysis over the course of approximately six months and included surveys and interviews with area businesses and nonprofit leaders. Listen, had listening sessions with different key sectors throughout the course of the analysis with the support of a resiliency planning subcommittee. And of course, had multiple opportunities for input from members of our SEDS committee. And I would also add that all of our work, whether it is directly related to development of the SEDS or not, has informed the components of our SWOT analysis and other parts of the SEDS. Here are a few, excuse me, here are a few key strengths that we identify in our SEDSWOT analysis. Weaknesses in our regional SWOT are shown here. One of the noteworthy changes since our last SEDS was published in 2017 is the inclusion of housing issues as a weakness. By stark, by stark contrast, the last time the availability and even more so the affordability of housing had been made as a strength by those folks who had been on the SEDS committee at the time. Our opportunities include several items that if it were not for the pandemic, may not have received as much attention during this SWOT analysis. Certainly, the in-migration of new residents has received a lot of attention. It remains to be seen how much of that will be permanent, but in the meantime, there's much discussion around how to encourage more of it to help stem our ongoing population decline. Entrepreneurship has also been even more of a hot topic than it was pre-COVID. And thankfully, we've been able to use federal and state dollars to really improve the ecosystem of support that encourages the birth and growth of new businesses in the Berkshires. Some of the threats that we face as a region are similar to what we would have identified five years ago, particularly the declining population, although the pace of that population loss has certainly slowed. However, there are several items on this list that have really come to the fore as part of the overall impact of the pandemic. In particular, access to and affordability of childcare is a great concern. And while this may have been just as true in 2019, the shifting dynamics of in-office and remote work, implementation of remote and online learning, and examination at the household level around employment and workplace preferences have really raised awareness on this topic. Out of that SWOT analysis process comes the SEDS vision statement, which really becomes the foundation of the SEDS. Our economic resiliency research uncovered some excellent frameworks for discerning and articulating resiliency issues. One that heavily influenced VRPC's process was the work of Brian Dabson, a policy analyst and researcher who encourages especially rural regions to approach economic resiliency by centering the themes of people, community, and economy. Interdependent elements which, if approached in this sequential manner, can help a region build its resiliency from the ground up. So using that framework as a basis, the new vision statement is Berkshire County will be sought after as an affordable, inclusive, and safe place for people of all ages and backgrounds, offering a high quality of life and abundant employment opportunities. Our community will nurture and support each other, prioritizing equitable access to education, healthcare, and housing, and protecting our environment for future generations. And we will build a resilient economy grounded in the region's history of innovation and entrepreneurialism, one that values and invests in its workforce and embraces change. If you happen to be following along with your packet, this is found on page 34 of the draft, the current draft. So upon that vision statement, we then built some broad goals. Our five-year SEDS identifies goals, again informed by the people, community, and economy framework. And those are aligned with five key themes. Those themes, put simply, are healthy people, ensuring affordable, equitable access to food, housing, education, and healthcare; resilient communities equipped to serve constituents, steward resources, and manage governance effectively; future-ready workforce, using a lifespan approach to education, training, and career versatility; strongness environment; through access to capital, technical assistance, and opportunities for expansion; and robust infrastructure, including investments in communications, transportation, and utilities. A wide range of entities advance Berkshire County toward these goals on an ongoing basis. And it's important to note that these are not VRPC-specific goals, but those that our partner agencies throughout the region have agreed upon and will be working towards together. The SEDS action plan then takes those thematic goals and homes in on specific measurable objectives, naming those partner agencies that will either head up or be a part of pursuing the objectives over the next five years. Down here are just some excerpts from the action plan related to goal number four, which is to provide a streamlined ecosystem of support for a diverse range of businesses through access to capital, technical assistance, and opportunities first. I'm going to go back for one second to just mention that during our public comment period, we posted a version of the plan that had links to online forums for members of the public to review what we had to date and then click through and suggest new action items and, and potentially put their name next to something that their organization or their entity was particularly involved in pursuing the solutions to. And we did have good participation through that process and had a number of fellow Berkshire County entities either asked to be added to the list of partners responsible or ask us to add an additional objective and put their name next to it. Priority projects are an element of SEDS that are no longer a required component, component by the EDA. However, we find that maintaining this list is a really valuable approach to tracking progress and securing support. We have been doing so in each of our previous SEDS and adding or subtracting projects in, during intervening years, subtracting if something is either complete or discontinued or adding projects if it's new since the five-year document was published. Traditionally, we had divided the priority projects by their location. So north, central, or south in the county. And this time, we found that there were some common themes amongst our list, and regardless of geography, they fit well into these categories. So that's how they're organized this time around. The previous SEDS, the one that was published in 2017, listed only one priority project that would have fallen under the category of food access and security. And it had evolved over the last five years to be somewhat of a catch-all for food and agricultural-related activity. However, this time around, we have three very distinctive projects that have been added for the 2023 through 2027 SEDS. Those are listed here on this slide. And the location of where those projects are headquartered is indicated on the map. So I want to point out right now, and I think this is especially true for this category, that while a project may be headquartered in Great Barrington, and that is the case with Berkshire Brown's Farm and Food Access Program, it is much more regional in nature. So as we take a look at where these priority projects are distributed around the county, keep in mind that many of them will have impact, and in fact, I would say most of them will have in fact, impact far beyond the municipality in which they're housed. The housing category, although there, although there are only two new housing-themed projects that have been added, and those are listed here, redevelopment of the community center on East Street and Adams, and then the Union Block redevelopment in Dalton. There are another three returning projects that are included in our overall list that had been in previous SEDS. And as you'll see in the next slide, there are also some old and new redevelopment projects that involve housing. So here in the mixed-use and commercial redevelopment category, which is the largest category of priority projects with a total of 12. This includes three new listings. The Dowlin Building project involves housing. And many of the carryforward projects in this category, including Waverly Mills and Adams and Eagle Mill and Lee, are also housing-related. Moving on into municipals and public safety facilities, I will mention that this is, has, has really been a growing category of priority projects in the last couple of years. In the previous SEDS, I believe we only had one municipal public safety facility listed, and that was the Pittsfield Police Station. And through a number of conversations and requests to include other projects, this has really grown to include, I'm not certain of the total number of projects in this category, but four of them are brand new. Moving on into programs and services, which happens to be our smallest category, but is still a really impactful one. There's a longstanding listing in this category for the VRPC Brownfields Program. And then the one being added this year is the proposed facility expansion for volunteers at Medicine, based in Great Barrington, but again, having a very broad impact, particularly in southern Berkshires. An entity which is doing really outstanding work with our underserved, underserved community members. Tourism, hospitality, and outdoor recreation. This category includes some longstanding priorities such as design and engineering of the Adventure Trail in North Adams, advancing the Greylock Glen Project in Adams, and redevelopment of the former River School in Great Barrington as a lodging property. And then a handful of new projects are listed here, including the redevelopment of the Adams Theater, which I just had some great conversations about during our dinner with some folks from Adams. That project is really central to the eventual designation of downtown Adams as a cultural district by the state. And then, lastly, workforce and industry support. In this category, I want to highlight two of the new projects that are listed in the SEDS. First, the proposed Black Business and Entrepreneur Center that is moving into a feasibility study stage, thanks to a recently awarded one-stop, one-stop grant to the Berkshire Black Economic Council. And also the Berkshire Innovation Center 2.0 proposal. This Berkshire, Berkshire Innovation Center 2.0 would turn the Pittsfield campus of the BIC that opened in early 2020 into a regional headquarters and launch satellite campuses in southern and northern Berkshire County. So again, although the map indicates both of these projects as being housed in Pittsfield, they really will have region-wide. All right, moving into the next section of our SEDS document, and the resiliency planning chapter begins on page 44, if you want to take a look at that. A separate grant from EDA allowed us to do a much deeper dive into resiliency planning than had been done before in any Berkshire County SEDS. Wiley Goodman, my colleague, senior planner for economic development, headed up the research and writing effort for a much expanded resiliency section. A complete chapter, again grounded in the framework of people, communities, and economy to help organize our approach. The level of detail that Wiley was able to include in this section, thanks to that supplemental funding, really makes it a SEDS within a SEDS that identifies both steady state and responsive strategies for resilience and contains a separate recommendations section that augments our core SEDS goals. Again, during the public comment period, we had, within the posted PDF of the draft SEDS, a link to an online form where people could share additional suggestions for the resiliency recommendations. And again, we had good participation in that and have built that input into the next draft. As part of our resiliency research, VRPC staff, along with members of our resiliency working group, surveyed and interviewed a broad range of community business and nonprofit leaders, and some of the findings are shown here. I really encourage you to take a look at this chapter and dig into the kinds of, of measurements that Wiley was able to find from national data sets, but these two happen to come from our local surveying, as I mentioned, of businesses and nonprofit leaders. So just as examples of the kinds of things we asked them about that helped to inform our thinking of the SEDS as a whole. Questions around what was the most helpful economic assistance that they received during the pandemic. So you can see the results here, as well as digging a little bit deeper into the specifics of the supply chain, supply chain challenges that they encountered. Okay, so since 2020, we have been See, okay, so since twenty-twenty, we have been including a COVID addendum. In the annual SEDs progress reports that we owe to EDA each year. And we've done so again in this new five-year SEDs. Um, key takeaways really remain the same over time, and those are that unemployment rates at the onset of the pandemic were worse here. Than uh, in the state and nation. Uh, seventeen-point-two percent versus sixteen-point-four. In Massachusetts and fourteen-point-eight in the U.S. Uh, I believe those numbers are for April twenty-twenty. And with a handful of monthly exceptions, Berkshire County's unemployment rate remained comparatively worse throughout the pandemic. The decline in our labor force has also been significant and disproportionate with state numbers, given our population size. While some of this is explained by a high proportion of sixty-five and older workers going into the pandemic who may have retired or retired early. Um, the decrease still raises concerns. However, on the bright side, relief programs have helped prevent pandemic impacts from being even worse. For instance, um, as of August twenty-twenty-two, more than forty-two-hundred PPP loans. Were distributed to Berkshire County businesses by the Small Business Administration. Eighty-eight percent of those were for less than a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but in total. Over three-hundred-and-seventy-six million dollars was provided to support our local economy. And according to the SBA, this resulted in uh, forty-three-thousand-seven-hundred-and-seventeen jobs being gained. And a range of other programs also supported our economy, from CDBG funding of up to twenty-five-thousand dollars for microenterprises. To smaller programs through the Mass Attorney General's Office and an Adaptation Fund earmark. Um, all of which BRPC helped to administer over the last couple of years. Okay, so our next steps include making final updates to a document. Approved or endorsed by the Commission today. Uh, we do have a number of uh, further edits that need to be made, and I'll explain. Uh, some of those now. One is that our distress criteria that EDA asks that we track continuously. Um, evolves monthly. One of the criteria uh, that we have to track is twenty-four-month unemployment rates. And so we want that to be as up-to-date as possible when we submit a final document. Uh, we will update all of the tables that contain that information and any uh, associated narrative, and then we will also display a map. Of distress, distress criteria by community and census tract. And include the locations of opportunity zones as well. Uh, we also hope to uh, do quite a bit of work to the document itself in terms of formatting. So we have been working to gather photographs um, from partner agencies and um, businesses, members of the public. That will help to um, make this much more visually appealing. And we want to incorporate those photos. We need to do, of course, a final run-through and make sure that we've done good proofreading and editing of all of the components. So. Um, in full disclosure, the version that you got from Tom on Monday. Um, is not the final final, um, but any substantive changes that we would make, we will be tracking very carefully. Um, and what we would suggest is that the Commission endorse the document. And provide the Commission chair with uh, the ability to. Give a final approval before submission to EDA. Um, otherwise, I don't believe the Commission would meet again. Go through a whole nother round. So we will also be meeting again with our SEDs Committee in December, uh, who will also have a chance to see um, a final version. And then we will be including a public rollout of SEDs content. Um, through our social media channels and on YouTube and with uh, partner agencies. Some of the pictures uh, along the bottom of the slide are just samples of the things that we've been collecting from. From the community uh, for the last several weeks. And I am happy to take any questions. And Wiley Goodman is also on the line, and so she can help with any questions you may have.
Thank you, Laura. Uh, are there any questions uh, before we uh, entertain a motion uh, related to this?
I, I do have a quick question. It's Nancy Socia in Stockbridge. Um, you talked about the food access and security in Great Barrington and Lenox. Would those be at the senior center?
The projects that are located um, on the map, and I'm just gonna flip to the right page here. Um, and in fact.
I can't tell where on the map if it's a senior centers or not.
Right. It is unlikely that the map is marked for senior centers specifically. Um, what we have indicated on the map is the, the. Location at which the program itself is housed. So for instance, the, the dot in. Um, Great Barrington is for Berkshire Brown and a project that they manage. And the dot in Lenox is for the Berkshire Natural Resources Council Farmland Access and Conservation.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Can I say something?
Uh, yes.
Oh. I don't know, can I say something?
Yeah.
Somehow I think the Farm Bureau should be brought in on this. It's kind of a critical. Part of the thinking, because it covers quite a few things. Need food, land, a whole lot of things.
We've had quite a bit of interaction with uh, with that group and members from that group throughout the process, so I'm glad we're on the same page about that.
The Farm Bureau?
Mm-hmm.
Any other comments, questions?
I have one quick question on that vision statement. Um, I don't know, I took a picture of it so I can remember. In, in the, in the section that talked about affordable, I'm gonna look at it because I want to be able to talk. There it is, um. Yeah. Saw it, Berkshire County was saw it after as an affordable, inclusive place for people backgrounds offering a high quality. I mean, is there any such, is there a definition of what that means?
I mean, that's a. That's a great question, Barb. I mean, I think a lot of people perceive it to mean different things, depending on the context of the conversation. Um, and certainly, if you're narrowing it down into housing, using that term can be loaded, right? Um, in the context of a vision statement this broad. I would not expect anybody to associate quote-unquote affordable housing. With our vision for the region as a whole.
So that is not in, in, in context of the whole.
That is not meant to reference.
Represent, okay.
No.
Is it affordable in the sense of, of living, like, cost of living? I mean, overall, overall. Okay.
Yeah.
Just, just curious.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. No, thank you for bringing that up.
Why did you know I was paying attention?
I know you always are.
All right, um, anyone else? Anybody in the room?
I should take the moment to thank Kyle, our SEDs Chair, who has helped us. Shepherd this process um, through many more meetings than the SEDs Committee is used to having in any given year. Um, and done so with great grace and humor. Thank you, Kyle.
I'd like to say it's quite a pretty document you have, even without uh, any further edits. It's impressive.
Being the Chairman of the SEDs Committee is the easy part. You and Wiley did all the work, so. And a mountain of work it was. It's a beautiful document. And uh, I know that you both put your hearts and souls into it, so thank you for that.
Hey, um, if there aren't any other questions, then I think a motion would be appropriate to approve the SEDs. Pending of the Chairman approving any final edits. Is that what you're looking for, Laura?
That would be great. Thank you.
So moved.
Second. Here we have a motion from Barb and a second from Roger. Does anybody have any questions or comments about the uh, motion? Okay, if not, uh, we'll go to a roll call vote. Uh, Kate?
Michael Mack.
Hi.
Caleb Darby.
Hi.
Uh, so I'm calling by town. I'm sorry, I'm going back to Peter Frog.
Yes.
Um, Mary McGurn.
Yes.
Malcolm Pick.
Yes.
Richard Rosen.
Yes.
Barb Davis Hessen.
Yes.
Mark Smith.
Hi.
Kyle Hanlon.
Yes.
Mark Anthony.
Yes.
Dari Hoi.
Yes.
Nancy Socia.
Yes.
Amanda Hamilton.
Yes.
Don Gagnon.
Yes.
Roger Bolton.
Hi.
Uh, Douglas McNally.
You're muted.
You're muted. Uh, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, motion passes. Um, uh, is, has John joined us yet?
I, I have, Mr. Vice Chair. I'm here.
Can I pass the baton? Well, I got you halfway.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Uh, good to see uh, everyone here. And the BRPC offices and everyone else up on the screen. Truly a hybrid-type meeting. Um, is that an echo town for me, or is that?
No, I think that was somebody.
Okay, anyone is muted? Okay, we good to go? I think we're good. All right, great. All right, so we're gonna move along. We have. Next on the agenda, item six, uh, survey results, recent movers and second homeowners. And we have Mark Lloyd, who is here to provide us with a presentation.
One second, and we'll share the screen.
All right, so thank you, John. Um. I'm gonna stand up here and see if this has to work. My computer's not showing. That's okay, it doesn't have to. Um, so. I'm here to talk about two recent surveys. We've done a survey of second homeowners and a survey of recent movers. Um, these were done um, back in the spring. We had combined all these questions into one survey. Um, and we had a whole bunch of filtering and logic in it so that we can extract. Info just on second homeowners and just on recent movers. Uh, we really want to understand the reason for being in the Berkshires, how they use their property and the plans for the future. So the combined survey, um, had, was sent to almost fourteen-thousand addresses this spring. Um, we used the assessor records to find the second homeowners. We had almost nine-thousand of them. And then we worked with Berkshire Realtors to get a list of all the recent um. Purchases, uh, residential purchases from January two thousand through April twenty-nine of this year. And that was about five-thousand unique addresses. I mentioned this does not include renters. It's only owners, um, so we, we are missing that segment of the population. So this was done in May, June of this year. There was around seventy questions. What was some built-in logic to the survey? No one had to answer all seventy questions. Uh, we had just over eleven-hundred responses, so seven-eight percent for each of the segments. Um, which is pretty good. Most of these types of surveys, you're lucky to get five percent, so um, we're happy with that. So I'm just gonna go over some of the results. So second homeowners. Um, they're primarily wealthy, educated whites from major urban areas, primarily New York City. Um. You can see the uh, average or the ages um, tend to be. Um, in the sixties and seventies and some fifty-year-olds as well. Um, we asked how long they had purchased, how long ago they purchased their property. The largest segment was over twenty years ago. But the next largest segment was in the last two years during the pandemic. So we had a lot of old-timers and then a lot of brand-new second homeowners. We asked about the cost of the house. Uh, largest segment was under two-hundred-thousand. But the thing to remember there, some of these people have owned their house for twenty, thirty, forty years. Um, so when we actually look at it based on the purchase price in year comparison, uh, in year purchase. You can see from nineteen-seventy-five to nineteen-ninety-nine, the largest segment was under two-hundred-thousand. From two thousand to two thousand nineteen, the largest segment was in the two-hundred-thousands. And then from two thousand twenty on, the largest segment, uh, although it's still small, is in the four-hundred-thousands. I'll also mention from in the last two years, we had more purchases over a million dollars than the previous years combined. Um, so it's been a lot more, we've, we've been seeing more movement throughout all the uh, purchase ranges. Um, but also, but definitely in the higher uh, possible. We asked about the impact of their, of the pandemic on their use of their property. And so the largest group, forty-five percent, have said they spent more time in Berkshire County at their second home. Than they normally do. I think we all have seen that. Um, but then forty percent said the pandemic didn't impact them at all in terms of their second home use. They were up here the same amount they've already spent up here. Um. We also asked, did they rent their house, uh, during the pandemic and, and the previous five years? And it's almost the same. There was no real change. Uh, the only thing that changed a little bit. Was a reduction in the month-to-month during the summer season. Uh, there's a few less people renting. We asked how they use their home now, during the pandemic, and then moving into the future. Uh, so during the pandemic, seventy percent of second homeowners just used it as their second home. Um. However, ten percent, just over ten percent, used it as their primary residence. Um, so they moved up here during the pandemic. They made this their primary residence for a year or two. Um, over the next year, so we're in the middle of that now. We actually said increase in those who use it just as their second home. And a reduction in those who use it as their primary home. So people moved here during the pandemic to use their second home all the time. And now they've gone back to their primary home as, you know, outside of the county. They do say over the next five years and then ten years is gonna be a slight increase in those who use it as a, their primary residence. Reduction in the second home use. Um, but it's gonna take twenty years to get back to the level of primary use. Um, as it was during the pandemic, so it's gonna be a slow increase. We also asked second homeowners about their employment. And it's pretty close between fully-employed and retired. Uh, forty-five percent fully-employed and forty-three percent retired. We asked those who were still employed, um, where do they work? Where's their employer? And as you would expect, seventy-five percent of them work for someone outside of the county. Um, but then almost twenty percent are self-employed. Um, Berkshire County actually has a very high rate of self-employment, around ten to fifteen percent. And so this is even higher than that. Um, state and nation are closer to five percent self-employed. So some key takeaways, um, the second homeowner survey, um, they spent more time in the Berkshire home during the pandemic than previously. With some making it their primary home. However, they returned to their previous patterns in their Berkshire home is now, uh, not their primary home. Some second homeowners plan to convert their uh, second home to their primary home in the coming years. Only in twenty years will it approach the pandemic levels. And then second homeowners are split between being employed and retired and a larger percentage of self-employed. So those are some of the key takeaways. The full report has a lot more data on it. Feel free to dig into that. So now I'm gonna transition to the recent movers. These are people who moved during the pandemic. Similarly to the second homeowners, the wealthy, educated whites, average age around 55, so a little bit younger than second homeowners. 25% of these movers came from within the county. And then the other 75%, they're predominantly from the greater New York area, New York City area, or elsewhere in Massachusetts. And majority of, so you can see the household income. Vast majority of these respondents are over 250,000 a year. So it's wealthy people who are moving in. The majority of the respondents from outside the county are part-time residents, though. So year-round residents, 50%, part-time residents, 45%. You gotta remember with the year-round residents, 25% of it, half of it, were people who were already living in the county. And so it was only about one-third of outside county, people from outside the county moved in are using it as a full-year permanent residence. The other two-thirds, it's only part-time. We also, similar to the second homeowners, asked their future, their current and future use in terms of primary residence and second home or first primary, I'm sorry, primary residence, second home rentals, stuff like that. We're gonna see a slight increase in those who use their recent purchase as a primary residence. But then that's gonna start decreasing. And I think it's just normal turnover of housing stock. People move by a house for a few years and then move on to another house. We asked where and how much. So good distribution from throughout the county. A lot of highest percentage was from Pittsfield, fell by Great Barrington, Williamstown, Stockbridge, Lenox. Those who came from outside the county almost predominantly were south of Pittsfield. This is where they purchased their house. We asked what they paid for the house. Again, largest percentage was less than 200,000. But when we look at those who moved in from outside of the county, all the brackets above 400,000 go up and the lower-priced housing goes down. I think what you're seeing is the locals are buying the lower-priced housing, Pittsfield Adams, North Adams. And then out-of-county owners are buying all the expensive houses down south. We asked about how did the pandemic impact their decision to move to the, to the Berchers? Largest group, the pandemic did not influence their decision at all. They wanted to move here and, you know, it was in their plans. But again, 25% of those were already living in the county. So, you know, 55, so about 30% of those from outside already had plans to move here. We had another 28% who had considered moving to the Berchers, but they hadn't committed to it at all. But then the pandemic hit and that changed their minds. And then we had about 12% who had no plans at all, no thoughts of moving to the Berchers, but they ended up moving here. We also asked what it was in the Berchers that attracted them to the region. So orange lines are not important, green lines are extremely important. So what was really important to people when they moved here was the environment, access to lakes, ponds, mountains, outdoor recreation, cultural amenities, and fewer people and more open space. A lot of that stuff we saw during the pandemic. Those things that were not important, jobs and economic opportunities. Good place to raise children, school quality, and surprising to me, proximity to New York City and Boston were not important to the vast majority of these respondents. Then we asked their current employment status. 65% are currently employed, about 25% are retired. Those who are currently employed, 55% work for someone outside of the county. 25% work for an employer in the county. Again, remember, 25% were already working here, were already living here. So we're not really seeing a change of the people moving here. They're not now taking jobs here. They're still working outside of the county or they're self-employed. But big takeaways, most in county purchases were central north county, out-of-county purchases were mostly south county. Two out of five purchasers purchased their house because of their pandemic. Approximately two-thirds of the county purchasers used their home as a second home. I'm sorry, out-of-county purchasers. They came for the environment and the culture, not the jobs, schools, or the major cities. And then two-thirds are still employed, but only one-third work for county employers. You can find both of these reports online if you go to Data and Information Services. Say you're listed there under the reports. Any questions? You can start sharing.
Yeah, this is Doug, this is Doug McNally. I, I looked over this pretty extensively earlier and just so that everybody understands what this really means. This is recent movers and the data is skewed because of people moving from outside the area who are older. When you, if you take surveys of people about what's important for why they're there, if you're talking about residents who have young children, so on, schools and amenities, and also those kind of things go way up compared to this. And I just, I'm a little concerned that the way this data looks about why people are moving to Berchers, it might, it might make people think that maybe we don't need to worry about the services and the schools and stuff like that. And it, just be careful. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you. I just, through the chair, could I make a comment on that, Doug, for Doug? I think that the heading on this thing has, is to do with second homeowners. It's very clearly guided and all the documents talk to the, the title of second homeowner. So I, I had the same exact knee-jerk reaction, but then I read it again and it said second homeowner. So it all makes perfectly good sense.
Yeah, I agree with that, but I'm just saying, taken out of context, we all understand this presentation. Given this data going someplace else, I think we have to be careful that people don't, it doesn't get skewed.
Yeah, yeah.
And misunderstood. That's all I'm saying.
Keep it, keep it all together. Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, it's important to look at the entire report and realize it's, it's, you know, largely second homeowners, but also recent people who moved here because of the pandemic. Don't take one table on its own and think about the other stuff.
I have one question.
I'm not talking about us taking it wrong. I'm just saying when this report.
Yeah.
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 Sorry, from Sheffield. I may have missed something, but when you were talking about second homeowners and who they work for and where they work, did the self-employed number rise?
Yeah.
Significantly?
Yeah, it's around 20%.
So that was more, it, it was more than what it was before they moved here. That's my question.
So we, the county-wide average is around, I believe, 10%.
Okay.
Second homeowners are around 20%.
Okay.
I have a question. Well, what, what was the purpose of gathering this data and doing this study? Is it gonna be applied to some follow-on important assessments or something?
It was really to just understand the impact of the pandemic on a lot of the second homeowners. And, you know, there's a lot of hearsay out there. Tons of people are moving here full-time. Second homeowners are living in their houses all year round. And we just want to understand, is that really happening? You know, are they staying, what their plans are, what are their needs, stuff like that?
So Mike, go back to my question. Let's say it's really happening. How do we apply that knowledge now to what we're gonna plan to do in the future? I just don't understand where this information applies, I guess, is my, the essence of my question.
So yeah, this is just informational. And I think it's, you know, for the towns, for VRPC itself, as we think about future reports and plans that we do, that we could incorporate some of these findings.
I think to your answer to your question, Dick, I mean, as Mark said, we were, there was all these rumors about the urban exodus and what it was gonna mean. And we wanted to try to quantify that in some way, because if it really was happening, that would have a big impact on our communities, or it could, positive or negative. And we just wanted to understand, if there wasn't any information out there about it. What we do with it now, I think we have to still digest it. This is relatively new. And it, but it doesn't seem as, as if the impact is as dramatic as we may have been led to believe from some of the anecdotal data. That's a takeaway that I have from this.
I have a question, if I may.
Okay, go ahead. Then we, okay, go ahead.
This is Nancy Socia in Great Barr, in Stockbridge. Did you ask the question of how many people came in to buy more than one home at a time in Berkshire County? Because I know that's like a countrywide thing where people were coming in and buying more than one house and then using it as a VRBO or, you know, not to live here even part-time. But was that in the survey? I didn't see it there.
So you did ask about, did they buy it as an investment instead of as a primary home or secondary home? And the response rates from that were pretty low. It may just be, you know, oh, they don't live there, they're not gonna respond to it, or they just don't think the survey was meant for them. So the responses of those who who purchased houses just as an investment property was not that great, was not that representative, I think.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a question in the room?
Yeah, I have a concern about
Yeah.
people who, who up in these towns, they can't live there because somebody is using it as a second home. So you grow up in this town and you can't afford or there isn't, you can't live there. And I know that that's happened in towns around me.
I, I think that's happening throughout a lot of the county. That's the bigger housing issue that, you know, for major permanent.
Any further questions? Go ahead.
Yes. Oh, yes.
Hey, Roger.
Could I, I'd like just to ask that after we're pretty sure the pandemic is over and maybe a little bit after that. So maybe in a couple of years, it would be very useful to survey people who have moved out. And I don't know how, it might be rather difficult to get a good sample. I think you obviously would need to get information from people like Barb and other real estate agents, but presumably they would have some sense of, they might be able to say where the present, where the, the past resident county moved to and, and maybe have an address. And I think that would be very useful information. I've noticed over the years that in planning, staffers do a lot of surveys of people in the region. And we need more surveys of people who are outside the region but who used to live here or, or who maybe thought about moving here but decided not to. Now, that last category is probably impossible survey, but I think we could survey the people who used to live here and then moved away. Thank you.
Roger, we did do that a little bit with our young adult survey where we tried to, you know, we did get surveys for, for young people who had moved out of the county a few years ago.
Okay, okay, well, that's good.
The takeaway for that was that they left because of economic reasons was one of the big takeaways.
I think we need a kind of, then we need a continuing effort on that.
Well, maybe over the next two years, you can help us figure out how we might do that, Roger.
I think, I think people like, that's the resource on that.
All right, thank you, Rod. Ready for? Yes. I need for this.
Sarah has a question.
No, it's finer. I'll mix that. Mark Smith has all of the.
Mark?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, Mark Smith from Lenox. Mark, I know you got a 7, 8% response to all the second homeowners and, and recent movers here. You probably can't answer this question, but do you think that the, the responses are relatively representative of the larger group? Or, I mean, do you have a sense of that at all?
So looking at the demographics and where they purchased houses or where the second homeowners were, we think it's pretty representative. You know, it may not be 100% statistically valid, but we think it is a representative sample.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else?
This is Doug again. I have my hand up. The question about youth, I'm sorry to jump in, but as a former high school principal and also Chair of the Youth Council of Berkshire Workforce Board. Part of the earlier report was about doing career awareness and so on and so forth for young people in the county. And I think that everybody should be aware of the fact that Berkshire County is seen as a lighthouse area in that every high school in Berkshire County now has a, a career pathway program in that. Recently, Berkshire, the BURC 12 thing that used to be the Berkshire Task Force on Education got a grant for rural education and started programs in some of the South County schools. What we need to do is get employers involved in that because Heather Williams at, at the Berkshire Workforce Board has been working on this for a long time and we are making inroads in the schools, but we're not getting the buy-in we need from the employers to do internships and so on to let people know, young people know what the job opportunities are in the county. And I, I think that that's a, a missing thing here. It, it, you know, you, you work, you talk about attract, retaining people, youth and so on, with the disparity in, in age. I just, I just want to throw that out so people know that it's there, but it's not being supported by the business community as much it should be.
Can I, through the chair, ask, make a point also that in the career pathway program, working in the industry that I'm in and also just being a homeowner and a landlord, we've got a crisis situation right now in the county with plumbers, electricians, carpenters, access to people that do sheet-rocking and painting. It's crisis. I mean, you try to get a plumber today and I don't, I don't know how and what they're doing in the technical trade schools to keep the students that do graduate here. But boy, it would be great if they accelerate and make more opportunity for that type of, of you know, career avenues to take because we're in trouble. And more people staying home during the pandemic made it 10 times worse because now they want every project in the world, you know, taken care of. And it, it created quite a, quite a shortage that's still, that's still going on right now.
This is Doug again. Techronic is transforming from a comprehensive high school to total vocational.
Oh, that's great.
There's a big movement to put, and I hope that when the South County people get their act together and get a new high school and great building. high school and great building, it's going to be comprehensive high schools that include that, and we suggest for that. It's been a huge lack of, uh, technical education in South County.
Okay, great discussion, uh.
Amanda has her hand up too.
All right, Amanda, go ahead.
Hi there. I'm sorry I couldn't join you in person, uh, but Unwell didn't want to share that. Um, speaking to Barb's point, um, I think, you know, we've got to bring this back to the lack of you know, young people are interested in training and trades. I know young people who are, who are currently training in trades, but they can't afford to live here in South County. I mean, it's just, it's a wretched situation.
Yeah.
That's so.
Unless a community makes a segment of housing available, which I remember at one point in my career where police officers, school teachers and people, you know, that public employees were given access to what you would call affordable housing. Well, the word affordable, again, me and, I was talking earlier in the program here, Laura talked, it's such a subjective word that, you know, it's, it's a dilemma. There's no doubt about it. It's a dilemma.
Yep.
Not bad. Hey, who else has a question or a discussion?
Kyle's got his hand up, but his, uh, sound is a mess.
Is it really?
Yeah, there you are.
How's that better?
Better.
Uh, in line with this conversation, um, one other thing that we should keep in mind is a lot of the tradesmen, given the choice between performing work in Berkshire County in just to our, um, west over in New York State, though, they'll opt for the New York job every time due to regulations.
Yeah, yeah, we are.
We're regulating ourselves to a standstill in terms of the trades right now. So it's just my, my, my two cents. Thank you.
Is, is Kyle, is there, is there a delegate representative or anybody in our, in our, um, atmosphere that we all talk to, that we can ta-talk to about this? Because it's, it's, it's not good.
Oh, Mitty, Mitty, an electrician, he's the one who would understand.
That's true.
Most, most towns in Berkshire County right now, if you want to change out a residential boiler, you're going to have to pull four permits to do it.
Yeah, yeah.
It, and if you could do that across the border with one permit, why wouldn't you?
Yep.
Kyle, I couldn't understand that you were saying it takes four permits to replace what?
A residential boiler. To change the boiler in your house, it would take four permits to do it.
So a plumber can't pull one permit, yeah, electrician has to pull one, the plumber has to pull one, a jar, yeah, yeah.
Oil, the fire department needs to get involved, and if something has to do with a chimney, have to have a general contractor get involved.
Yeah.
So, uh, it's owners.
Well, that's the, that's the whole state of Massachusetts in its entirety. I've worked, when I worked for the, putting the Lee Outlets together, these people were from Tennessee. They said this was the hardest state to get permits for, to build a complex of that size, as far as the process, it took them two and a half years to get permitted. It's, and that was in nineteen ninety-five. It's not getting any better.
Yeah, so my better customers just love the Hudson Valley right now.
All right.
Okay, anything else? All right, that was a great discussion. Thank you. Thank you, Mark. Next on the agenda, item seven, Berkshire Funding Focus. Uh, I mean, it's an initiative. Um, Tom, did you want to keep this one off for discussion?
Yeah, sure. Um, so we've been partnering with several organizations uh, through the county to try to do a, a better job of assisting uh, communities, nonprofits, educational institutions and businesses in securing the various numerous grant programs that are available as part of the COVID recovery. Now, earlier we heard about the, the impacts to COVID. We tried to assess those, uh, what they might mean in, in the housing market. And now we have, um, worked to really try to make it easier to access these grant funds. And along with that, um, we've hired Karen Peltow to kind of lead this effort. Erin has worked in grant programs, uh, through the, the state of Massachusetts for many years. And we're calling this initiative the Berkshire Funding Focus, and Karen's going to lead us in this, uh, discussion.
Thank you so much, Tom. I'm going to share my screen. Wonderful. Thank you all so very much for your attention this evening. And as Tom mentioned, um, this is being, uh, designed, we are creating a pathway, um, hopefully for a significant amount of pandemic recovery funding to come into the county. Our objective is to provide information, coordination and capacity building support to, um, these key audiences, cities and towns, nonprofits, school districts, small businesses and entrepreneurs, um, who are uh, seeking federal stimulus funds or state to aid with their pandemic-related recovery efforts and so we do have county-wide community partners that came together to, um, put this into action and they are listed on your left and um, there are part, partners within partners that are providing more direct technical assistance. And, um, VRPC is the lead for cities and towns, nonprofit center of the Berkshires for nonprofits. They are supported by the Community Foundation and Berkshire United Way. And then BURK 12, that was just mentioned, uh, in the previous conversation, for school districts and One Berkshire for small businesses and entrepreneurs.
Oh, good.
And our approach is not to become the county's grant writer, but to help, uh, as much as we can, um, to help people find grant opportunities. So we are actually curating a list, um, a searchable list that is on our website and as, and also sending them to folks that we know would, uh, be, uh, likely interested in, in applying to make sure they're aware building capacity. Right now, we're working with, uh, nonprofit center of the Berkshires on a training program. And we will continue to offer training, um, so that folks can develop their skills and, um, become more adept at pursuing funding opportunities. Convening, this is a probably our, I think this is on some kind of automatic thing, and I apologize about that. I'm going to just try to stay here. Uh, convening, um, we're bringing together partners. A lot of funders, state and federal particularly, are looking for collaborative proposals. They're looking for partnerships. They're looking for leveraging. And so this is really, I think, turning out to be our most significant um, benefit is really to identify a funding opportunity and pull together the right people so that we can have a compelling proposal. And consultation, um, when people have questions about a solicitation, a contract, any grant requirements that they have to meet, once they receive funding, we're here to help answer questions and, and really help demystify the process and, uh, get through the bureaucracy. And so I mentioned, we have, uh, launched the website. We, on our, on our homepage, it's an overview. Uh, we want to really direct folks to using county data, so, uh, pointing them to Berkshire benchmarks. And, uh, really directing them to the resources, uh, that are available on this site as a first step. So the first, uh, thing are the opportunities, the funding opportunities, the grant opportunities themselves. They can be sorted by category, by the topic, by the audience. If you're a municipality, you can search for the ones that just apply to, um, municipalities. And we also have resources. So if you need to understand what the different terms mean, there's a glossary, there are glossaries there. There are some key policies that are often, uh, referenced in grant solicitations that people need to be familiar with in order to move forward. There's a calendar where we have the events, particularly the training events and, um, an About Us page, which provides a little more, um, information about our partners and also our operating principles. And a way to contact me if people need more information. In terms of highlights, I wanted to share some of the things, um, that we've been doing thus far, um, in our four core audiences. So for small businesses, right now, there is, uh, there's funding on the way. Uh, it's ARPA funding that has come through the state of Massachusetts that they are then sending through Mass Growth Capital Corp, Mass Ventures and Mass Development on its way to small businesses. And so we've already started meeting with, um, we've met with Mass Development today and we will meet with the two others so that we can really sort of proactively find out what they're going to be looking for and how we can help our small businesses be competitive and make sure that they have all of the, um, prerequisites, uh, necessary to be able to apply for and hopefully secure this funding. For nonprofits, I mentioned the nonprofit center of the Berkshires is hosting what they're calling up the Level Up Series as part of the BFF effort. They have been, um, online webinars and in-person workshops and all of those that are focused on grant writing. Um, I've been attending and introducing BFF and offering technical support and several organizations have already requested follow-up uh, consultation with me for technical assistance. For education, uh, thus far, um, I'm going to be meeting with, uh, the person who's heading up the Berkshire Regional Arts Integration Network, which essentially is looking at, uh, making sure that our region's cultural assets are not just for the tourists. They are for us and they are for the children and, and youth that live here. And, um, sort of making sure that the, that, that those partnerships brick, can bring, um, the arts into the classroom and also that, uh, the students can have field trips to experience, uh, theater and live music and other, um, art opportunities. For cities and towns, uh, I'm, I'm particularly interested in, in hearing from, from you. I hear a lot about uh, the need for infrastructure funding and the need to understand how to access the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act and the funding that is, uh, stemming from that federal uh, opportunity. Um, there's also, uh, the One Stop for Growth, which I know is funding a lot of the projects that, uh, Laura had mentioned, including the Adams Theater, um, in part. Right now, there is a call, uh, from the Mass Broadband, uh, Initiative uh, for the Municipal Digital Equity Planning Program. Essentially, cities and towns can request, uh, can assist, can request assistance through this program and be matched with a consultant. And VRPC is one of the, the many, uh, consultants that have been, um, pre-qualified to provide these services to develop a digital equity plan that will then position them for funding through the Infrastructure Act, um, and in future phases. And so we'll, we'll be sharing information out about that opportunity. And one of the, um, uh, services that we also hope to be able to provide is as we get to know the funders and, uh, we want them to get to know all of our municipalities, all of our nonprofits, our businesses, and actually have specific Q and A sessions with them for, uh, for the Berkshires so that, uh, folks here can have the best information available, but also so those funders can get to know what our regional, um, needs are and what our regional strengths are. And so we basically have this fantastic, uh, once in a generation opportunity. And the entire Funding Focus effort is here to help. I am the point person, but it really is, um, a steering committee and a, and a group of people who have um, demonstrated commitment to seeing this through. I do want to mention, I don't have a specific slide on it, but one of the efforts, um, I'll go back to highlight our, um, operating principles, and the first is equity. And so we have, uh, we are working with Dr. Emily Williams to, um, survey, um, uh, the BIPOC, uh, community in the Berkshires and really so that we can truly understand and offer uh, training and, um, and services to make sure that our nonprofits and businesses across the, across the board and across the county all have uh, opportunity and are all well-positioned to secure funding, uh, to be successful. So I urge you to contact me if you have questions or have ideas or referrals for projects or, um, individuals who, uh, you think could be, um, that we could help. Uh, because we are here to help and I also look forward to your questions this evening.
Okay, thank you, Karen. Uh, any questions?
Yeah, this, this is Doug. You, you mentioned broadband. I, I think that we should get involved in that in some extent because, um, right now, I live in Windsor and we have better broadband service than North Adams or Pittsfield because we built our own. And there, there's an opportunity out there right now for the communities that, uh, are suffering, excuse me, under the service of cable companies to maybe improve this, this service. So I think that's something we should look into.
I will say mass broadband, um, will have, um, programs to connect the remaining unconnected as well as better connecting uh, those who are connected but may have, uh, unreliable service. But this particular program that's out right now for assistance is about, um, making sure that the broadband is accessible. Um, again, that word affordable. And, um, so that everyone has an equal opportunity to participate in meetings like this and to participate in their local government and also, um, schools as, um, as necessary. So there's, there's going to be different pockets of money for different purposes coming through the, uh, mass broadband, um, network.
Mary has a question. Okay, Mary?
Not necessarily a question, but a comment to what was just said. Uh, Baldino, Michael Baldino participated in a, um, Massachusetts municipal webinar the other day regarding the program. And one of my questions related to the possibility of funding for more infrastructure support, namely the opportunity for providers who can provide symmetrical one-up and one-down speeds, one hundred up and one hundred down speeds, being able to overbuild on, uh, infrastructure from ISPs that are unable to provide that speed or that reliability. Unfortunately, he had no answer. Uh, and merely reverted to the fact that this program is focused on, um, really, uh, affordability issues, inclusiveness. And led me to believe that it's a program that's still looking to work within the given infrastructure for broadband in the county. There may be some money coming in the future, but at this point, this program will not do it.
Right, this program is not focused on that. There will be future funding for, um, for uh, connecting the unconnected and improving connections.
And, and that's, that's the point I'm trying to make. It, it, there, there's a problem that now that the small towns like Windsor, we used to have nothing and now has nine hundred up and eight hundred down internet access. It is, has better access than North Adams or, or Pittsfield. And there's some complacency that, that there's not going to be funding to fix that problem, that to bring everybody else up to speed.
Yeah, I specifically asked that question. Um, and they indicated that there, it would be that the focus, there would be future funding. Because I also wanted to make sure when they said connect, connect the remaining unconnected, that they didn't ignore the fact that there are some who are connected, but not well-connected.
Okay, let's see. Anyone else? I don't see any hands up. If I could add something.
So, you know, one of the ways that this has been built out is somewhat of the hub and spoke model. That VRPC is serving as the fiscal agent for this effort. And the spokes are the other entities that were mentioned, the Burke 12, the nonprofit center, One Berkshire. And we also serve as the spoke for the municipalities. And what I'd really like, if there are specific needs in your community, that if we can start to collect those, then Karen can start to look for particular grant opportunities that may be available and may be appropriate for your need. And earlier today during our in-person part, we were, I sat with the folks from Washington and I have, I know a need that you have for the three-phase, you know, electricity going through town. Those are the types of things. I don't know if there's a grant for that, but if we can get somewhat of a comprehensive list of community needs, then we can help, better help direct grant funds to you all. But I just want to add that, add that point, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Tom. All right. I think we're good. All right, thank you, Karen. The next agenda item, number eight, open discussion, okay, the fun is about to begin here, about priorities for Berkshire County. Tom, you want to introduce this discussion?
Yeah, I thought that would be interesting. And actually, it seems like you've been doing it already to a large degree. But we have an opportunity that only comes along every few years really where we have a new administration coming in. And it, you know, I know that actually there was just an article that came with State House News that the Senate Governor Driscoll is starting her transition teams right now. And she has a call for people to be on with transition teams about, you know, the administration going forward. And as, as part of that, we need to really kind of put our, our plugs in for what we want as communities for this new administration. And if you all could, you know, continue this discussion that we've been having about priorities, then, you know, I can either try to bring those forward through the administration or through various channels. I mean, we've identified housing as one of the most important priorities for the county through our previous work on the housing strategy, on a lot of different efforts. But I guess, you know, that's coming from, you know, staff. I mean, you folks are out in the the communities. I'd be really interested in hearing some of the top priorities from, from you all.
Well, could I start? I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Roger.
Yes, well, tonight is not the first time or even the third time I've heard sentiments such as the ones Kyle expressed about the, you know, excessive regulation of entry into trades. I mean, I, for example, I remember hearing about this about four or five years ago when the when tsunami planning was done by the town. So it's just a frequent theme. And, you know, as Barb said, it's a problem all over, or maybe someone else's problem all over the state. So it's a useful thing to remind our new state administration about the need. I mean, there needs to be a serious look at the present requirements and the summer intention is really making it very difficult for people at all income levels and all locations in the state to, to make necessary renovations. I mean, it's part of the problem of housing that is afford, that much of the population can afford. So I would suggest that.
Okay, thank you.
This is Doug. I have my hand up. Two things, as a selectword member in a town with a lot of roads and not a lot of people addressing Chapter 90 formula is a biggie. And the other thing that I think that we really need to focus on is workforce development. You know, if we, if we don't, if we don't develop the workforce we need, we're going to just, you know, fade on the vine. I mean, we can't assume that we're going to attract people from outside the area here. We have go our own workforce.
All right, thanks, Doug. I think Amanda has a hand up.
Yep. Um, following on from what Doug has been talking about, certainly in South County and in rural community in South County, you know, we, we are in a total housing crisis here. And, you know, sometimes, sometimes interested parties tend to conflate availability versus affordability. And, you know, and the thing is that here, we're really looking at how do we, how do we maintain ourselves as a vital and vibrant community? That, you know, with people of all ages and, you know, and backgrounds rather than becoming, you know, as it were, a rural theme park. You know, for, you know, big money coming in from the outside. You know, and, and in, in the connection of, of employment opportunities, how do we, how are we going to ensure that, you know, we really can have, you know, sustainable agriculture and small businesses so that there are employment opportunities in our communities that are not just, you know, property management. I mean, it's down here, it's like property management and hospitality.
Okay, thank you.
One of one of the things I find interesting is housing keeps coming up. And, and people, you know, you want to keep the workforce here, you got to have affordable housing. Well, we also have to have the ability to build. And unfortunately, our regulators that are geniuses in Boston decided to do things like the Rivers Act back in whatever year and decide up here, we needed 200 feet setback from a river before we could build. Where in Boston, they gave themselves the exception of 25 feet. So I think these marvelous people that don't have a clue about the end result of their wonderful intentions need to realize, yeah, you know, whatever they did that for, I have no recall, but it's very imposing on people that have large properties that want to develop them. And there's a Rivers Act that's preventing them from. If we say to the, you know, the Commonwealth, those powers to be, hey, pull that thing back to 50 feet or whatever you can do to, you know, continue to protect and preserve the environment, make sure we're not doing any violation to the variety of species that we're supposed to be protecting. So the endangered species don't get ruined. That in and by itself will open up vast lands, vast lands. So, you know, it's just little things. And I was going to also ask everybody that's on the planning boards. I'm sure you're all in the same boat. Our zoning bylaws are horrific as far as the inconsistency from town to town. But the, the, the actual lot size all in by itself is sometimes intentionally prohibiting building.
Absolutely, Barb. Absolutely. I love.
Barb, I'm not sure, I'm not sure what the administration can do about that. Those are local zoning.
But I think together, if the planning boards and we're all, I'm assuming a good variety of folks here. But yeah, that's, that's correct. You're correct in that regard. But I think we as, as planning board members, you know, if we want to see our communities grow and we want to provide the workforce housing that's going to keep the folks here that want to be tradespeople, we've got to be active participants as well. But I
That might be a subject of another meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you wanted to say something.
Hi, yes, Caleb and Dalton. I just like to add on today, like, I know like the regulations, you know, it's, it's bad, but perhaps, you know, because these are being written mostly by, you know, lawyers and politicians and stuff, maybe we could make a push to have more representation of the professionals that actually work in the building fields. You know, at the table while these regulations are being made at a state level.
It's a question.
Yeah, yeah, thanks. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Mary?
Egremont is rural, of course, and what is very prominent here too is agriculture. And I think this, and I noticed on the SEDS that is an area clearly of interest. I would say that looking at what the Harry Conklin Fund is striving to do and Berkshire Agriculture Ventures are striving to do in order to be able to provide land to farmers, particularly younger farmers want to get into farming, want to be tied to the land. A way in which they can have some security, they can have access to affordable land. It also involves housing because they need to have housing to go along with it. But they need to step up. The Harry Conklin Fund was set up because of very practical need of Molly Comstock of Colfax Farm, who abruptly lost her lease for two and a half acres. And she was basically made as a farmer homeless. And there has to be something that deals with this issue and finds a way and way to provide, like I said, access to land that is affordable. We're pricing out of the, pricing land out, land is disappearing for small businesses, small farmers. And I would say that to me is a priority. Certainly for us, housing is also. Egremont does not have any defined affordable or workforce housing. We are trying very hard to create it for the first time. But it is tough.
And what are some of those barriers, Mary, that make it tough? Well, we're not barriers, but why is it so tough?
Well, it's it's tough in that locating where we can put it. All right. One of the things that is stressed from what I've seen primarily that the administration is interested in is locating or providing funding for affordable housing that's placed near transportation. Well, we don't have it. And I would also say that's another issue. We're rural, okay? We don't have bus stops, okay? That people can go to, to be able to travel to work or to buy necessities. So that doesn't help us sometimes in some of the program initiatives that are outlined. The other is zoning, but that's a local issue. We'll address it because of how our zoning is set up. And of course, the problem of misunderstanding is a polite way to put it of what affordable housing is and workforce housing. So the not in my backyard is as much a plague here as it seems to be in many other places across the country.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'm not sure again. I'm not sure again what the administration can do with that.
I don't expect them to do anything with that, but I do expect to possibly try to look in ways in which they can look more into the situation where a small town that doesn't have transportation per se, okay? That is starting its first effort to have affordable or workforce housing. We do and did get a One Stop for Growth grant to help us with our zoning. And we are embarking on, in fact, we're already into our master plan through a best practice, whatever it is, grant that we also received. So we're making efforts in that regard. But you asked what priorities were for communities? Well, I would say, because we're rural, we'd like to see farmland. We'd like to see strong farming community, particularly young people able to do it. We'd obviously like to see affordable workforce housing that we would have in our community so we can have a balanced population. We could get younger people. We could have housing for the employees this county needs. And we'd be able to attract, if we had housing to offer them, we don't. We have very, very, we have looks to know housing stock and the houses that we have are way beyond the possibilities for employees of the town to be able to buy a home and live in the town.
And so that has been
A reality.
A priority that I've been working on with others is to get right-sized housing programs for our smaller communities. You know, a lot of the programs that, as you've mentioned, are not appropriate for our communities. We don't have the size and scale of the development projects that are competitive. We don't have a lot of the qualifications, like you mentioned, transit. So this is really something that we're really trying to advance. And I've been working with other folks from Western Mass. So this is, so thank you for reinforcing that. I think that's one of the priorities that I'm going to be working on over the next little while. Dick, you had your hand up.
Yes, there's no question, there's a big shortage of plumbers and electricians. But if you look at the data that was just shown to us, one of the other attributes of the county is the number of golden agers that live here, 37% versus 25%. And if you look at the availability of sophisticated medical care in this county, it is not there. People are being helicoptered to Albany, to Springfield, et cetera, et cetera. And my view is that the administration could do something to incentivize the hospital purchasing some of the sophisticated equipment they need and incentivizing medical specialists to take up residence in the county. That's a big, big need in my view and a big risk to a high percentage of the population we have that live here.
Yeah, thanks.
That's it.
Well, before I mentioned getting together somewhere with the Farm Bureau so the Farm Bureau can tell you what they need more than we
All right, thanks, Sarah.
I want to add something from the perspective of small hill town. You know, we're, population less than 580% of our land is tax-exempt conservation in some form or another. One of the things, I've mentioned this to you, Tom, that presents a little bit of a headwind in the face of all the conversations about housing is, is a conversation that used to be present in the county. I haven't heard it so much. And I think it's still very much present and that is the education costs issue, the cost of education here because of our decaying populations and for other reasons. And I know there's the Rural School Commission and I confess I haven't kept up with their, their work and where that is in terms of getting implemented. But I'll tell you, in our community, we don't feel it yet. And, and the headwind I'm speaking of is if there is new growth in our community, a new home, the average single-family home tax value in Massachusetts, in Washington is about $4,080. But if that home has a child, the average assessment for us for that education in our central Berkshire Regional School District is $14,000. Now, presumably, a family coming, working family was able to move to our community and welcome them. That they can afford the taxes, right? That's been a calculation. What happens is that burden shifts to the 20, 25% of our community, which is What happens is that burden shifts to the twenty, twenty-five percent of our community, which is elderly population on a fixed income. There's a much larger population that's elderly, but that's about that much that's on fixed income. And they cannot continue to bear that. And the risk that we run is that in the, the growth of our community at the younger level, we're driving out our seniors because they cannot manage the tax burden. And the primary driver of that, I have to say, in our community, is education costs. Forty-seven percent of our budget. It is tremendous and a good portion of that's not just the Central Berkshire Regional School District, but is the vocational education program. And you've heard me speak about this before, but just a couple of real examples is the tuition is nineteen thousand six hundred and twenty-two dollars this year for vocational education student. There is chapter seventy money that comes to the community that offsets that, brings it back down to that twelve thousand or so. But transportation for out of district, Central Berkshire Regional School District does not have a vocational ed program. Students are entitled to vote yet. It's very important in filling the trades. Big fan of it. However, the community is responsible for transportation with virtually no reimbursement. This year, we have four students going to three different schools. Two of them are going to Taconic, it's half an hour away from us. One's going to McCann, another forty-five minutes, and one's going to Smith, an hour plus. And the average cost of transporting those students and have to say, the Smith parents took responsibility for their students. That one's actually off my plate because that would have been twenty-seven thousand dollars for one student, is twelve thousand five hundred dollars per student for which we get a reimbursement, in theory, to maybe about five percent. Those costs just pull us down and they hit our tax rate and they hit, I've got seniors on fixed incomes who will probably see, I'm sorry, say, will see their property tax go up this year about four, five hundred dollars. This is really serious in our community and the other impact on that is all that conservation. Open land is, is great. Mark shows the data, that's one of the things that bring people here. It's obviously a high value of our community, that's why we live there, and I think that's true throughout the county. But when you have so much, particularly in, in our case, not just the state-owned land, I won't go into that whole complaint. Not just the watershed land that's actually, you know, reimbursed fairly well, but nature conservancy, not to pick on, that's just the one example, but they have practically tripled their holdings in our town in the last year, for two years. And our community, there's, there's a cost to the public good of open space. We all recognize that public good, we all value that public good. I think our state values that public good, especially with the climate change initiatives. But there's a cost to that, and unfortunately, in this instance, that cost is borne by the local community. And that has to be shifted, that has to be shifted in some way to be born at a broader level. Because it's, it's causing a community like ours to implode under the weight of a burgeoning tax burden because we have no room to grow our tax base and the land keeps getting bought up by conservation. So there's a, a conversation growing in our community of how much conservation is too much conservation. You know, some of those things are, are hard to say, you know, arguing against families with kids, you know, that's only one perspective, obviously, from a financial perspective. From the other perspective, we absolutely need those young families in our community. Otherwise, you know, where's the vitality?
So you, you mentioned the Special Commission on Education. I, I know that there is going to be some type of omnibus bill that is going to be filed, that's being crafted, that is going to address those recommendations. I don't know the specifics of that yet. But I know Representative Blay, who was one of the co-chairs of that special commission.
I guess what I would say is to add to your list when, when you talk to the administration, that don't lose sight of that fully embrace and support it. Because they've come up with some, I'm, I'm sure they've come up with great suggestions, but we need to actually get those across the finish line to the point where they're actually being felt in the community.
And I, and I, and I do think that there will be action on education this session.
Great, thank you.
I'm not a politician though.
No, no, you're our conduit for getting that out.
Sorry, I think it's interesting that Bob mentioned the two-hundred-foot buffer on the river because one of the things I was going to say is as I, and I work in the environment, so I, I like the two-hundred-foot buffer. And one of the things I was going to say in the last few years, in my work in Berkshire County, I have got quite concerned about how much forest and woodland we're losing to these large new homes that are being built. I'm from, I'm in Sheffield and housing and workforce housing is extremely high up on the list of importance to us also. And we have a lot of restrictions. One, we have a lot of conservation land, we have a lot of wetlands that prevent us from building. But I see, oh, and also when we're talking about building affordable housing and it's the same issue that someone was talking about earlier is Eggermont. You know, but Great Bantons putting forty-six houses, forty-six apartments in on six and a half acres, is it? And forty, as being part of the Housing Commission in Sheffield also, forty-six units is what is considered a profitable number to build at any given time. Anything less than that isn't economically viable for, for the builder. More than that, they start losing, their profit goes down. We're not going to build, well, we don't have a, really have a space to build something like that in Sheffield. It's also out of scale with the town. But the, the real challenge with housing in small towns, I think, some of the, the challenge is we don't have septic, we don't have town septic. And we only have town water in a small central area. And that's a huge block when it comes to building workforce slash affordable housing. What I do think we can do and reconsider and is viable in small towns is changing our zoning so that we can do infill. A lot of these affordable housing, it would be perfectly situated more centrally to the town center. And also then if you've got more apartments and, and buildings in town center, then maybe that's more likely to maybe attract a little bit more public transportation. You know, you need one stop in town center and/or two stops rather than trying to service the whole town. So there's my thoughts on, on that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chair, I'm noticing the time, I don't know when we want to wrap this up, but somebody does have some comment. Is there anyone who hasn't spoken yet? I don't, I mean, you're, clearly you're the chair, so.
Okay, looks like we have one more question from Lanesboro.
Just real quick from the, the, the woman that spoke just a minute ago, talking about no septic in her, her community, I think she meant no sewer, but I think the, the Title V regulation, because it is a state regulation, could help a lot of these rural communities with some more modern allowances instead of this decade, you know, old systems that are being, you know, installed and, and failed regularly. Whereas if they looked into some new technology that, you know, rest of the world is using and, and made that available to the communities to, you know, some, and I don't have a clue what that is, but I'm sure there is technology that offers different kinds of disposal systems. That all by itself could help in, in what this lady before me spoke about is having some kind of condensed system set up in the middle of your town where you could put maybe ten or twenty units in and have a system in place that, you know, electronic, I don't know what it is, you know, burning type of a product where it disposes of the waste in a burn situation. Something less than throwing the, the discharge into the ground. You know, it, it's some kind of a disposal method that removes it rather than puts it, you know. So just a thought, if we can talk to the state representatives about changing Title V, that's a little bit more receptive and easier to use and helps with building, then maybe so.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the last item on the agenda, the Executive Directions Report, Tom.
I think it's pretty straightforward. I don't know if there's any questions. The one item that, you know, that has been popular that maybe helps with some of the items that was raised today, especially about local zoning, is the DLTA, District Local Technical Assistance Program. We'll be getting a solicitation out soon. This is a program that we receive, VRPC receives money from the state and that money allows us to provide our staff to work with towns on a, a variety of items. So if you, some of these items that we talked, that we talked about today related to zoning would certainly qualify for that assistance that folks wanted. And then the other thing we did talk about is its digital equity planning program. So I think I'm good, John.
Okay. We're going to vote for adjournment, so please hang on until your name is called and then you, then you can leave as soon as you say aye. Motion to adjourn.
Michael Matt. Peter Trump.
Yes.
Helen Darby.
Aye.
Mary McGurn.
Yes.
Malcolm Thicke.
Yes.
Dick Rosen.
Aye.
Mark Davis Hassan.
Aye.
Mark Smith.
Aye.
Kyle Henlon. Mark Anthony.
Yes.
Sorry, boy. Aye. Nancy Sosha.
Aye.
Amanda Hamilton.
Aye.
Don Gagden.
Aye.
Roger Goldwin.
Aye.
Doug McNally.
Aye.
Okay, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Yeah, thanks, everybody.